The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar, Councilman Hen.
I have none.
Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
No, I have.
Councilwoman Daigle?
None.
Councilwoman Gardner?
None.
Councilwoman Webb?
None.
And I have none. Amazing. Okay, our first study session item is a presentation from Chief Lewis on Fire Department overtime expenditures.
Mr. Mayor, we're having this presentation because I think as the council is aware, we recently had a Public Records Act request for total compensation, including overtime of all city employees, and you got a copy of that report that was generated and sent to the newspaper. I would imagine that there will be an article in the next several weeks, but all cities, it's my understanding, the same request was made of. But in looking at that report, I thought that one place in particular, there may be some questions, but I think there are good answers for overtime, was the Fire Department, and I thought we'd be proactive and talk about the overtime in the Fire Department, how it's done, how it's budgeted, and options that have been looked at. So, I appreciate Chief Lewis saying he would be glad to do this, and so I think he's going to give about a 20-minute presentation, have questions and answers, and that'll serve us well. Thanks, Steve.
Good, thank you. Our mayor, council members, thank you. And actually, this was something that fell on me at my former employee when I worked there, when new council members came in, they were as astute as you were, and so when they saw, they'd take a look at the budget, there were certain things that didn't resonate well with them, and one of them was, they'd look at certain numbers and they'd go, "Wow, how do they generate that?" So, it was always my responsibility to go over and talk to the new council members and walk them through that. So, I have no problem in doing that. We're very transparent. Everything we do is above board. And I would tell you that I understand when it first brushed for anybody, when they pick it up and they look, it probably does create some consternation with them when they see these numbers and like, "Well, how does that work?" So, hopefully, I'm going to address some of those in this quick review. I've got a PowerPoint, but you have in front of you. I just want to give you some objectives. What I want to do is give you, talk about constant manning. What does that mean? What is that definition? And I'm going to talk about that, and how does that work with overtime? I'm going to discuss some of the misconceptions of our overtime. I'm going to address shift exchanges. What is that? And how does that work in relationship to when we talk about overtimes of different kinds? I'm going to address our vacation relief overtime, our planned overtime, and our unplanned overtime, and what are all those, and how do they fit into the whole scheme? Again, not to insult your intelligence, because probably most of you are aware of this, but, and I know with all of my family, when you talk about overtime in the private sector, usually that talks about a little bit of inefficiency. How, why do you have overtime? Are you not managing your personnel correctly? Is your workload too much? How does that all work? Because to them, they see it as a problem, and how do we do that? And I, the next bullet point, I have to correct it. I think I was being a little presumptuous when I said no other business like us in the Fire Department, because I actually thought, you know, in fact, our brethren, the PD, they work under the same models we do, it's a 365-day-a-year, 24/7. But there are others, too. I would think that there's, you know, hospitals to some degree are open, so they're always doing that. And there's probably businesses that are operating with all times of shift work. But it is very unique, because I'm faced with making sure that we have 39 operation personnel on duty in the fire station every day. Now, again, I have 25 other 40-hour work personnel that come to work at 8:00 in the morning, go home at 5:30. But I have 39 personnel that are required to be there every day. And to accommodate this coverage that I need for 365 days a year, 24/7, we have three shifts, A-shift, B-shift, and C-shift. And so, that's what I call constant manning. I am required, if we're going to provide that service, to make sure that we do that. And again, why do we do that? Obviously, to give the response times of five to six minutes to your home when you call 911. And I will say that happened 8,871 times last year. We had responses on a 911, and our average response time was four minutes and 28 seconds. I'm pretty proud of that. It's actually a very good response time to average over those 8,871 calls that we go on. And for me, that's good. So, let's talk about, with giving you just a little bit of background, what are the three types of overtime I have? And again, I'm going to talk about our operations. There is some overtime in some of my other divisions, but it's nothing that you would jump out and see. But you would, in the operations division, the numbers are what, again, causes people some consternation, and it's in my 2320 account. I have planned overtime, and just for instance, in our '08, '09 budget, that was 81,543. I have vacation relief. That is 1.4 million. And then I have uncontrolled overtime. That's 878,000. So, what are those represented by? Well, let's first of all, go to planned overtime. My first bullet point is on duty, on duty, on duty. I try to do as much training as I can, that is mandatory for all of our personnel, on duty. And some of that mandatory training, as you can see through the list there, is a number of things that I'm required to make sure that we take care of. Not all of them, but mostly with paramedics. I have CAL OSHA requirements on paramedic state certifications, national certifications, and those are all things that I'm required to do. I try to do that on duty, with on-duty personnel teaching it and with people taking it. And then, in fact, I will, if you are normally doing something from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock in the evening, I would say, "Well, rather than from 5:30 on, let's just adjust your schedule. Don't come in till 10:00 o'clock," and we'll just rotate that around so that 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock occurrence is part of your normal duties. And so, this 81,000, I think it was, I showed, I watched this with an eagle eye, because this is important for me. And nobody just arbitrarily gets overtime in here. They have to run this. They have to put, submit it, all the way up to Dave Mays, my deputy chief of operations, and he questions them on it. And then there's someone who'll actually bring to me, and we'll sit down and go, "You know what? I don't think so." But a lot of it is just mandatory things we do. UAWC grants, I just put that in there, because a lot of our training is taken care of, sometimes in the six-figure amounts, that we procure these grants to take care of training, so it's money that we don't have to come out of our budget or the general fund. And we aggressively go after those grants. We've been very fortunate. There's one thing, like I said, the PCR forms, that's our patient care forms. We generate revenue, probably of 1.7, sometimes up to 2 million, in our paramedic billing. So, I'm required to get that into the system within a two-week period to our billing folks. So, I really make sure that we get those in. We have some of that inputs that data, but we start getting behind. I'll bring somebody in that helps us do that for a day or two, and then we get caught up, and we don't use them anymore. But I have to keep that up, because the billing process requires it. We try to do everything on duty. City mandated classes, there was, as you may or may not know, by law, required, every employee is to have harassment training every two years. And I'm always trying to figure out a way to do that, because for most people, when they have a person come in and speak for four hours, they walk away from their desk, and they come over and they sit down. They listen, and they go back to their desk. Well, I'm not afforded that, because I'll ask Human Resources, "Well, how long is this person going to be here? One day?" Okay. So, for instance, when we did the last one, I brought my whole department in as much as I could to do, make sure I got the state mandated training. It cost me about 27,000. And I just don't, I think that's not a good way to do it. So, I'm always saying, "Is there a better way to do it?" Because I know there's state mandated teachers. Isn't there a way we could do this on duty? So, I'm always looking for ways to make sure that I don't run this account up. And it creates a lot of work, but it's good, because I try to keep that number within the reason that could. Why do I pay them a time and a half? I think, again, I'm not to insult any of your intelligence. You're all aware of the Fair Labor Standard Act. After 40 hours, my in-band folks, I'm required to pay them time and a half. At 41 hours, I've got to pay them time and a half. Unless by contractual agreement, they're agreed to do less. I have one bargaining unit that has agreed to that. They don't, you know, they don't, by agreement bargaining, they don't get the time and a half. All the other ones, it's by contractual agreement in their MOU. So, that's for the 40 hours, folks. I don't have too many of that, because we just don't have a lot of overtime. There is some for fiber vention, when they sometimes have to go out on call-outs for overcrowding, arson investigation comes under fiber vention. There are some 40 hours that I am required to do that. But where it comes into play is the shift personnel, again, those folks that work in the fire station. When that law came out, they realized they had a problem with firefighters, because by large, they're not working 40 hours a week. If you average out their time per month, per week, it's 56 hours a week. Well, they're not going to pay 16, cities aren't going to be required to pay 16 hours of time and a half. So, they said, "How can we work around that?" And so, they came up with a 24-day FLSA cycle. And within that shift period, they work 192 hours. And so, that's what we work on. It spreads it out. It accounts for the entire shift where they're working. And so, they work 193 hours, I'm required to pay on that 193rd time and a half. That 192 represents eight shifts. They're required to work eight shifts, 24 hours, within a 24-day cycle. And we have that 24-day cycle set up. So, that's basically why we're doing that. So, let's talk about vacation relief. That was that one you saw that was 1.4 million. By contractual agreement, they're allowed to take vacation. So, now, I'm required to have 39 personnel on duty every shift. And why? Again, to provide that service. And so, when they take off vacation, which they're entitled to, I have to backfill those positions with other people. Where do those other people come from? Those are the individuals who are off-duty, so that I can stay in compliance with the constant manning requirement. Now, I will say, I'll kind of, if you'll indulge me, this is where I diverge a little bit, because this is where people will say, I guess if they're being nice, they'll say, "Well, it seems like we're compensating one group a little more than other employees." If they're a little more rude, they'll say, "It looks like you fire guys got a racket going here, where, you know, it looks like you take time off, and everybody's kind of, it looks like a pretty good deal." And in fact, there is some alluding to the fact, and I will say it's not what it is, but that there's a, it's union-run, it looks like it's orchestrated by them to maximize for their labor group the most amount. Do they benefit from it? Sure they do. But is it orchestrated by them? Not at all. It is something, again, to make sure that I keep 39 personnel on duty every day. So, is there one group that's benefiting? Absolutely. But is it orchestrated by them? No, it's not. But they're all union members, so obviously, they benefit.
How do they, let's say I'm a firefighter. I want to take a vacation. Can you just take it anytime, or you have to put in for it, or how does that work?
You have to put in for it, and on those, you have to, in fact, there has to be enough people, and they have to do it far enough ahead. I think it's five shifts. There's, they put in, and so we can plan for it. Now, if there is nobody signed up, and for instance, if there's nobody willing to work, they can't take their vacation. There has to be someone willing to step in and backfill that position. What sometimes happens, and I'll explain that in just a second.
Well, just another quick question. So, if they're, if they can't just take it whenever they want, you can kind of structure it so that you have a certain amount of hours, let's say, every shift or period or whatever, that's overtime, that's vacation hours, let's say. So, is it possible to have, I guess like, I guess I would call them floating firemen?
Let me, now, if, hang with me, and that'll be my last, my last point. We'll talk about some of the models that are there to address, to alleviate that. And that's one of them, and I'll talk about that. Because, hang with me, because I just want to give a little more ground. There was one exchange of shifts. One thing that this really helps, it looks like this may be another one of those things where firemen are helping firemen, but what happens is it really saves us the city money, because what happens is, for instance, if I want to go to a wedding, I'm in a wedding. And I'm actually, I'm going to take the time off. I need the time off, because they asked me to do it. So, I either use a flex time or take a vacation day to go. With, now, that affects me, because I've got to pay their backfill person a halftime. So, what they do is they go and they ask, you know, "Steve, hey, Steve, I'm going to be in a wedding. Can you come work for me? I need to be off for eight hours, and you can come in and work." Now, there's no money exchanged. This is all done between me and him, and it works very, very well, and everybody monitors it very well. So, I take eight hours. A qualified person comes in, works in the fire station for me for eight, and I just owe him another time. And so, we go back and forth. No money's exchanged. I don't have to pay anybody halftime, because the downside was if I, I said, "I've got to be in the wedding." And they go, "Well, you can't take it off." So, what happens? Now, it wouldn't happen here in Newport, but on other fire departments, what happens is the guy going, "I'm taking off one way or another. I'm going to call in sick." So, when they call in sick, what happens? I now have to fill that spot and pay halftime. So, this exchange of shifts works really well. People come in, but to the observant eye, someone goes, "That looks like a little racket you guys are working there."
So, even if the person who's backfilling the shift or taking over the shift is now into overtime hours, he doesn't get overtime pay?
Not for exchange of shift. There's no overtime whatsoever. He's there, just been between, back, a better term, gentleman's agreement between me and him. I'd come in. I just need a warm body there.
I'll cover your shift today. You cover my shift.
Absolutely.
Some other time, and we don't pay any extra for that.
You pay no extra. And I benefit from it, because we use that a lot, so I don't have to pay halftime. So, it works out real well. We have a telestaffing computer program that keeps account of it. It's our business rules, and I can tell you that, so it really keeps any collusion that some people may say that we're working, and one person's going to get a lot. Again, everybody puts in requests, but the computer program does try to be fair and equitable, and it goes down to the person that has the least amount of hours, they are assigned. So, someone isn't just racking up on their own, or say, "Hey, you and me got a deal. We'll work back." It's all above board. It's a computer system. Anybody can look at it. They can get into it. It's all up there, and we can see what openings are, which ones need to be filled, who's going to fill them, and it's done in a fair and equitable way. Again, does somebody benefit from it? Sure they do. But it's above board, because someone would say, "Well, boy, that person could actually do pretty well. He's working his regular hours, but now he's making more money, overtime." And I, you know, and I, obviously, they are. If you look at some of the, how much they make. But again, it dulls me, because I wouldn't choose to work that amount of hours that that person's going to be working.
Do we have any part-time firemen, or are they all full-time?
All full-time.
Is there such a thing as a part-time fireman?
Absolutely, and I'll address that in my ways to alleviate overtime.
Chief, just, I want to make sure I understand this. So, if a firefighter works 192 hours, that's his normal shift in the 24-day period, and he works another 24 hours or another three shifts besides that, we don't have to pay, and because it's a shift trade, we don't have to pay overtime for the three extra shifts, even though he's already worked 192 hours?
That is correct.
Okay.
On a shift.
But if you call him in and say, "I want you to work."
If I call him in and make him work, or say, you know what, or he puts in to work to fill a person, that other person that went on vacation, and there's no agreement, he comes into work, he's over the 192 hours, and he needs, we're going to pay him time and a half. Yeah.
Do you have any idea how many hours or shifts we're talking about under exchange of shifts? How many? Just out of curiosity.
It could be anywhere from, I mean, it could be.
No, no, on an annual basis, how many of those go on?
It's unlimited. I mean, I don't know how many, we keep account of how many you're owed and how many you've got to work back.
That's what I'm saying. Do you know how many firemen say, "Okay, you do mine. I'll do yours"? I mean, how many, is it 1,000 shifts a year, or 10,000 shifts, or?
It happens every day. There's exchanges. On the telestaff, you look up, there's exchanges that are on there. So, 365, at least, there's somebody doing that somewhere in there.
So, probably over 1,000?
Could be. I can find that out.
It's about two or three a shift would be a rough estimate on how many standbys per shift.
So, so six to nine a day?
Yeah.
Okay, so it could be a couple thousand, yeah.
No, there's only two or three per shift.
But there's three shifts a day?
No, one shift.
Oh, one shift per day.
24 hours.
As a shift, okay.
They go off, another shift comes on. So, anyway.
Is there a way that an exchange could ultimately trigger an overtime down the line, let's say, a few days later? Let's say I work one shift, and somebody said, "Take my shift Tuesday and Wednesday." I did that, and all of a sudden, I suddenly work 45 hours a week, and then I had the opportunity to work more time, so it ultimately triggers overtime?
No. I mean, all I know is the telestaff program, if it's an agreement between me and that person, that no way enters into the FLSA amount where you need to be time and a half. That's, it's off the record to some degree, and they're not, the law doesn't require us to do that.
But doesn't it sort of count towards the tally of what you worked that week, though?
You know, it all equals out, but what happens when a person exchanges shifts? They still get credit for being, for working that day.
Right.
And the other person who exchanges the shift will get credit for working the day the person exchanged with.
Okay, and then the next day, then I could possibly get overtime, where I wouldn't have gotten overtime if I didn't do that exchange?
No, it doesn't count towards overtime.
But it counts towards like hours worked, wouldn't it?
No, it does not.
So, just to elaborate on Councilmember Daigle's question, then, if I take a shift as part of the shift change, it does not count as part of the 192 hours under the FLSA?
That is correct. It does not count. Only when you work under the time and a half, FLSA does it count. Otherwise, it's off the books, and it's recorded, so we can see that it's there, but it's not recorded as far as attributable hours. I mean, we can keep count of it, but it doesn't count against you that way.
And then, it's, I mean, it would be pretty time-consuming for the council to understand all the intricacies of how this works. Do you have any suggestions to reduce the overtime, any management strategies?
Well, let me say that, as people look at vacation relief, they'll go, and I can tell you that it was tried here a number of years ago. Someone said, "Let's get some floaters. Let's pay for them. We'll upstaff three per shift, so when we have these vacations, we'll fill those people in." Because I remember Tim Riley, as I pulled up the archives, years before I came here, he was addressing it with the council that was here then, and he said, and that's what they were doing. But pretty soon, you do the math, and it's pretty clear that a consultant come in. It is cheaper, and like he said then, and nobody likes to hear it now, it is cheaper to pay time and a half to fill that spot than to hire a full-time person and pay them all their benefits. We have a very nice benefit package, and that exceeds what the half, what the time and a half would be to put that person in there. And when they realized that, they said, "Well, I guess you're right." So, there was nine individuals through attrition. They let those go, and then they opened those spots up and put time and a half. It is cheaper.
So, basically, the benefits are more than 50% of the pay?
Absolutely.
And when you talk about health insurance, but you're also talking about, you know, bilingual pay, training pay, you know, college degree pay, CERT pay, and all of those special pays.
What about PERS? Are we paying more money on the halftime than not? Do we only pay on the time, or the whole time and a half?
You don't pay PERS on the overtime?
Just the straight, no.
Just the straight time?
Just the straight time.
So, we're not paying PERS on that portion of it?
But, no. But every time you sit down, you can, you know, and I've done this many times, and we keep an eye on it, because historically, it has not always been that way. Years ago, it was cheaper to hire new people, because the benefit packages weren't.
So, even without the PERS benefit, the benefits, firemen benefits are more than 50% of their pay?
No.
Oh, the replacement firemen have PERS, you're saying?
Yeah, the PERS would be included in that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
Health insurance.
Just thinking of it backwards. That's right.
Yeah. So, one thing would be these floaters, so they realized that, and they said, "Okay, that's not going to work." They just do the math. They didn't like it, and people do not like it now to hear that. But again, we're, it is what it is, I guess, and I guess there's another way. People go, "Let's go to eight-hour shifts." Now, that didn't work, because it required more shifts to work. And they didn't have two days off a week, so it wasn't like a normal graveyard shift, and it just did not work. Brownouts, let's close stations. Could surely do that. I don't know if that's the way we want to function in this city, is where we're now starting to run with closed stations. I mean, I'm a citizen here. I wouldn't appreciate that if somebody did that in my neighborhood. There's other ways. People say, "Well, let's use volunteers and cadets." There are people that do that. I don't know that that's what I would want to do, is put young kids on there in that capacity. They do, some cities do that as a training thing, but not necessarily filling in, taking the place of a full-time firefighter. If we had the luxury of having, which we don't, and we're fine with what we got, but there are cities that have four-person engine crews. And so, they can reduce down to three, as we do, and they can function. They just don't fill it. We're at the minimum staffing where we're at right now. We can't go any lower, other than to close that rig down. So, we're at the minimum staffing that we're at. So, that's not a, to me, an appropriate way to do it. So, you know, and I'll try to say this without sounding flippant or casual, but this number here is, to me, is the cost of doing business. I mean, it's, if we're going to maintain the 39 people that we need every shift, we're going to have to do it in the manner that we have this configured with our shift work.
But where does the idea of part-time firemen come in? It seems to me that's an ideal application for a situation like this, if we have the availability of part-time firemen.
When you say part-time, I would say that is a volunteer or a cadet. Those are kids who are trying to get into the fire service. They're not full-time employees. And there's, in most cities, they don't substitute them for a firefighter. It has been tried different places without a great amount of success, but they do put those people on the rigs. Now, they become a four-person engine to get them training. But they're just, they're kids that are getting through the school. They're getting the training, but they're not full-time city employees as a part-time employee.
I guess when I had asked the question, I was not thinking about what you were saying. I was just curious if there were, you know, full-fledged firemen that only wanted to work part-time. They didn't want 192 hours in a 24-hour period. Maybe they only want to work part-time for whatever reason. I mean, just like other people want to work part-time.
Retired firemen that don't want to work.
Yeah, someone who just doesn't want to, that would have the training and knowledge that you would want, but just doesn't want a full shift, you know, full.
Well, in essence, I think that you have to look and say, "Okay, when you bring them on, are you going to not give them the same benefits?" And if that, if you're not going to give them any benefits and just pay and pay, well, that may be one way to look at it, but I would say, is that the type of personnel that we want filling in?
Well, it seems like we've had very highly qualified people retire at the age of 50. You know, they found an incentive to, you know, retire, yet if there was a way that they could collect an hourly wage, they may have an incentive to do that, and the city may have an incentive to hire them.
Hey, I'll add that to my list of models and take a look at it. I'm just trying to think. I'd have to sit down and look. I don't, you know, I wouldn't off on first brush say that would be necessarily the way I want to go, but you know, it's, I'll take a look at anything, as I have on all these. And to me, it's a matter of you sit down, you scratch it out, do the math. If it doesn't work out, why would we pay more when we can do it with the time and a halves?
Well, but particularly, though, in today's environment, where retired firemen, recently-retired firemen, may not have as many opportunities to do other things gainfully employed with their time, and I just wonder if there isn't the possibility of developing a pool of individuals who are retired firemen that don't want to work full-time, but still want to stay active and understand that they've already retired. They've already got their retirement benefit, but may be willing to work on a part-time basis, at full wage, but no additional benefits.
I'm going to have to suggest that, it sounds very good, to me, anyway. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because usually, the guys that are retiring are getting up in age. They're slowing down a little bit. They're not in as good a shape. The places where you're going to ask them to fill in are going to not necessarily be in the management position they've retired from. They're going to be in the positions where you expect them to be in, let's say, a little bit better shape than the older guys might necessarily be, so that, I guess, some of the really good athletic ones that have really worked out and are not really interested in continuing on as a fire captain or a battalion chief and want to come back, that might possibly work, but.
So, every retired fireman was a fire captain or a battalion chief? I sorted out that.
Yeah. By the time they retired, there's a large percentage of them are.
But that's the point. There's a pool of them that aren't, and therefore, is it a strategy that's worthwhile to think about to see if you could put together?
You know, we'll look at it. I think there are some obvious issues to deal with. One is that those people would receive, need to receive the same amount of training that full-time people receive. I think you don't have many firefighters who retire as firefighters. I don't think you have many people who retire at age 50. Maybe you do have a lot more in police, but in fire, I think they stay around quite a bit longer.
They do. Here in Newport, they do.
But, I mean, we can take a look at it and see what kind of interest.
No, I, you know, it, there's, I'm sure there's some things, I would say, you know, when you get to the 50s, you've got a different personnel that you're looking at as far as doing the job, and it's going to be interesting because of their physical conditioning. It's why, you know, I think if you were to talk in relationship to the unions, they would say that's one of the reasons that they have the 3% at 50, which you can agree or disagree, but it was that we want to make sure that people that are in this strenuous-type job were cycling out before they're in their 60s and getting somebody hurt or getting themselves hurt.
Chief, 50 is the new 30.
Yeah, I know.
That's right.
That's right.
I've got, maybe I've got a future career for me when I get retired.
One other quick question.
I've seen you in the gym. You can handle it.
Yeah, I trust you to put out a fire in my house, chief. Um, what is the percentage of overtime compared to our, you know, wage budget? I mean, how, are we talking about 5% of wages go to overtime, 10%?
Uh.
About 18 million is our regular budget for part ops.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, probably.
19, 20%.
Yeah. For that ops, for ops.
For ops.
And that's where you're going to see the, the numbers that you see there. Most all the other divisions, it's very minimal. Wouldn't be any more than you'd see in any of the other departments. Wouldn't, wouldn't raise any red flags. Um, real quickly, the other last portion of that was the unplanned overtime. And this is where you'll see all the sick leave, vacant positions, injury on duty. You can read them all right there. Again, historically, it's somewhat predictable every year. I can see how much that is, but that's what those amounts fall in there. Again, if you're a 40-hour work person, when any of these happen, I don't fill your spot. It just, the desk stays open like anybody else. With the operations, the 39 people, if, if I have an opening, I have to fill it. And again, vacant, this, this is usually the paid out because I have vacant positions. I'm trying to fill people. Um, for instance, right now, I have vacancies for eight, nine firefighters. Well, I'm filling those and paying time and a half. I'm trying to get those filled and I'm, and I'm getting pretty close. So as soon as you see those filled, that's going to go way down, the unplanned overtime, because now I have people in there full-time. And, um, so that, you'll see that column reduce appreciatively. But it's still, everything else that's in there are things that I have really no control over, but I, I plan for them, um, on a day-to-day basis. And again, on the operations, I fit my plan for them because I know that if they leave on any of those, I have to put somebody in there and then I'm required to pay them 100, uh, or pay them time and a half if they go over the 192. So 40-hour work people, not a problem. Desk stays vacant. You've asked a lot of questions. Are there any other ones that would come up in, in the midst of this?
Um, what's the five-year trend in terms of overtime? I know that, kind of the baseline budget of the fire departments over five years, but what about the overtime component? What's that done?
It's gone up at the same rate, or at the same rate as the acceleration due to the contract. We have not increased planned overtime.
And some of those, we, they are predictable. We know how much they're going to be in. We know what the contracts are and what, when they take place.
And then what about the actual overtime work, all categories? Have you looked at that?
What usually happens at the end of the year is that.
Come on.
Terry Giliszewski.
What usually happens is that, uh, and over the last five years, we've been hiring a lot of peop, new people as, as the, um, folks have been retiring. As a result of that, we, uh, our salary, actual salaries have been less than what is budgeted. And the reason for that is two. One is we're bringing them in at a lower rate. And number two is there's a salary savings that's generated because now, instead of paying somebody at, um, regular salary and benefits, we're putting somebody on overtime, which is time and a half. Our, our average of, of our salaries across the board is 1.67. That's our benefit package. So when we pay somebody a time and a half, uh, it's less of an expenditure. So over the last three or four years, we've actually put money back into the city in terms of not spending our budget. It usually comes out of the, the salary portion of it. On a typical firefighter, uh, that we do not fill a position for, we're saving about $9,000 a year by filling it with an overtime position.
So by that extension, you, you're not doing your job, chief. You should be having more overtime.
That's correct.
You're correct. But that creates other problems.
That, that creates the worst hair.
I'm just being facetious. I realize that. You have morale problems.
Yeah, I, I, I play the fence on that one when I need to and I jump on the other side, but, but running, it would be absolutely correct. It would be to keep them. But then I have operational issues. Um, at some point, I don't have enough people to fill them. I have to start mandating people in there. And logistically, you know, uh, my deputy chief operation has a nightmare trying to fill those because we have so many. And we did have problems when I first came here, and I've been trying to fill those as quick as possible. And we're getting pretty close to doing that. So, uh, you know, we don't have operational issues.
What, um, a shift is 24 hours and you have eight shifts in, in a 24-day period?
Correct.
And?
Twenty, no, eight, eight shifts in a 24-day cycle.
Yeah, eight shifts in a 24, but a shift is 24 hours.
That is correct.
Correct. Do you have any restrictions? Can it work, can a guy work eight shifts in a row and then take off the next 32 days and work eight shifts?
Uh, no. That would not work out because the, the cycle is already preset and plus the A, B, and C shift. You can get on the computer and that'll go out for 15 years. Everybody sees when they're working. So you can't, you can't rearrange how you want to work. You work when we tell you to how to work.
Do you have any restrictions on how many shifts they can work in a row?
Uh, at this point, nothing written down. I'm, I'm, either the past, we're looking at that closely because we feel that there could be some issues if you're working a, a shift exchange and then overtime and then your regular shift. Now there may be a fatigue factor. We want to make sure that we, we factor that in. Um, and so we don't usually have a problem because most people know what their limit is and they stop and they don't, they don't work anymore. But they can go, sometimes they'll work four shifts in a row.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public want to comment on, uh, this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to, uh, our next item, one of my favorite subjects, property insurance renewals.
It's that time of the year. So Lauren Farley is going to talk about the property insurance renewals. We have our contractor here and she's going to walk you through what the bids look like, what the market looks like, and where we are in that process.
Right. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm glad to see you again. It is this time of year again. Um, our insurance renewals will be before you at the next council meeting. Um, what we wanted to take the time this, uh, this afternoon though, is to just give you an overview of the market, let you know how the renewal process is going. Mark Sahorian with Brown and Brown is here to explain that in detail. I also wanted to make sure that you had all been introduced to Terry Cassidy, our new, uh, human resources director. And Terry is here to assist with any questions that we may have from either human resources or risk management on the subject matter. But there are no direct questions. For me, I'd like to have Mark step to the podium and give you his presentation.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Council. Uh, it's head time year again, and this is one year I wish I had a crystal ball. Because with our economic crisis, it's really hard to determine where our market's going. But I spent a lot of time with that crystal ball this morning, so I'm going to give it my best shot. We had five years of a very soft market. And I think, I believe, by the end of the first, uh, fourth quarter of this year, we're going to see increases in pricing across the boards in property and casualty. And at least by the first quarter of 2010. And that's if not sooner. However, it really takes into consideration that our economic crisis doesn't get worse. Because if it does, then I don't think the hard market's going to hit as fast. Also, we have taken into consideration catastrophic events. If we have another catastrophic event, all bets are off again and we're going to see rising prices right away. Now with all that, I tell CFOs of companies, really budget for the third quarter and beyond for increases in your premiums. Now the magic question is how much? At this point, I really do, do not have an answer. However, I'll be in close contact with staff on a quarterly basis, if not more, to keep them up to date, what, what the trends are. Now, if you don't have any questions as far as where the market's going, let's talk about the marketing process.
Actually, I do have a question. Why is it that you're so conclusive that we're going to be entering a hard market? What, what are the factors that are causing that?
Okay, it's really a combination, especially in 2008, a combination of the increased loss ratios from the insurance companies, along with their increased losses in their investment portfolio. And I could tell you back in November, and it really leads to in September, October, and November, with meetings I've had with insurance companies who are telling me prices are going to increase in January. Fortunately, they did not. But I hear stories day in and day out that they are going to get their pound of flesh, and it's a matter of when. And again, my guess is it's going to be by the fourth quarter. Now, if our economic crisis worsens, I think it's going to put the brakes on it and we're not going to see the increases.
Uh, Mark, in light of the, um, financial pressures on the PNC companies, are you confident that the firms that we're doing business with are going to continue to be in business and that the firms that we're going to solicit for future business are viable in today's market?
Well, that's an excellent question, and that's the $6 million question. Uh, one of the carriers you currently have is AIG. And AIG has gone from an A++ 15, stable outlook to currently an A minus 15 negative outlook. So, and they're both on your excess liability and workers' comp. We have very viable options that we're prepared to discuss in greater detail at the next council meeting that will give the city at no additional expense options to move. Are there any other questions on that piece? As far as the marketing process, we really start, uh, in November, updating the information and going, starting to go to market, talking to the market. Uh, every year, we do a comprehensive marketing, but this year even greater than before. I talked to carriers I haven't talked to in three or four years on your account, really because we weren't certain, and I wasn't certain, as to when the market was going to hit. So we want to put in our wheelhouse and to be able to leverage every insurance company we talk to. So I want to get every price on the books that I can, so we can do a proper negotiating for the city. Now, in December, we, uh, do our formal submissions to the market. In November, I talk to the market, I meet with them, but we develop and bring out our formal submissions. In Ja, January, I first meet with staff and let them know where we are, where we're going, where I think it's, the pricing's going to be. In February, this is the time where we finalize everything. And, um, I had meetings today on your account. I will have meetings tomorrow, and I'll be prepared to give to staff by Friday where I think the numbers are going to be. They're going to be legitimate numbers, but I am not going to stop my negotiations. So there's a very good probability or chance, when I go to the final council meeting on the 24th, my numbers will be different than what you'll see in your report. As far as my anticipated renewal on the master property policy, with the master property policy is basically all risk with some exclusions, and the major ones are earthquake and flood. What I'm anticipating is based on a 0 to 5% decrease in, in rates, from, and premium compared to what you're currently paying. On the DIC, we're.
Mark, that's a, that's a decrease of 0 to 5% in the rate per million of coverage or total dollar premium?
Okay, that's basically what you're going to see is, um, right now, today, you're going to see approximately a 4% decrease in rate. And at the end of the day, uh, you're going to see approximately a 5 to 6% decrease in premium, I believe, at this point.
So total premium dollars will go down 5 to 6%, most of which will be because of a rate per mil that's lower?
Yeah, rate per mil that's lower, but also it takes into consideration, we're getting some additional coverages thrown in that are not part of that rate. So, um, in other words, they're actual, they're supplemental layers or coverages that they're giving us, including at the price. So in, in other words, we have, uh, building ordinance coverage, for example. We're going to be getting that as, at a much lower rate than we are everything else. So, um, the limits that we're getting on, uh, building ordinance are going to be higher. So I'm trying to give you, in, taking that into consideration, that even though my rate is lower and I'm increasing some coverages, I'm still going to have a lower premium.
Because our insured values are down?
No, because what we convinced the carrier to do is to include the ordinance coverage at the premium. They're not going to charge me more money for it. So, and that doesn't take into consideration the actual rate they're going to give us. We just negotiated, let's say they want to charge me X, and I say, "Okay, you know, uh, you can have the order."
Whereas you would have previously had a, a premium charge for that coverage.
Right. And we just want it thrown in now. Uh, as far as DIC, that's the earthquake and flood coverages. Basically, we're expecting , uh, about a 2% rate decrease on the actual rates on the DIC. The ex, excess workers' compensation on the rate indications, they're coming in at 0 to slight decreases. And I'm hoping and anticipating, uh, after conversations with two more markets this week, that that may, may change to the positive. But we do not have anything concrete. This is worst-case scenario. Um, as far as excess public liability, we have 0 to 5% decrease. Now, the 0 to 5% is really taking into consideration the incumbent versus a couple other alternative markets that I'll be more prepared to discuss with you at the next council meeting. But they, uh, we're in talks with them right now and it's looking very, very good. As far as the other lines of insurance, which are really the watercraft crime and fiduciary, we are not expecting any major changes as far as the rates. The only question would be on fiduciary. We're, uh, in discussions right now because the rating basis might change. And if it does, the premium's going to go up slightly, but we're talking $4,000 or $5,000 here. We're not talking, uh, a significant amount. In summary, the renewal for the March will be modest rate decreases. Uh, but there is no major change in coverage and we will not give, give away any major coverages by going to any other carriers other than the incumbent. So we're not going to change if it means we're going to have to jeopardize what coverages we have. And we'll keep the city posted on the market trends. And I think that's going to be the most critical thing that we do for the city this year, is really keeping staff in touch with where the pricing is going to go. Uh, if we have a catastrophic event, and that catastrophic event could be major hurricanes or wind damage in Florida, that's going to have a major impact on other catastrophic exposures such as earthquake and flood. And if we have another event like we had four or five years ago, it's going to mean you could possibly have 25, 30% rate increases in your earthquake next year. So those are the type of things that are critical for the city to make their budget for 2010.
So in relation to that though, um, have you thought about multi-year rate locks?
Uh, I'm in conversations every day with the carriers and no one's willing to commit to multi-year rate locks, um, for a couple of reasons. Because they don't know where our economy's going. They don't know where, uh, uh, their reinsurance is going to be priced. Uh, and also, on property insurance, rate locks for all practical purposes are not going to be any good for the city unless we get a non-cancellable provision. And, uh, most domestic carriers will not be willing to do that in the areas of the property and the excess. So even if we got a rate lock, it's going to be a renewal process that they could non-renew us. So that rate lock really is not a rate lock.
Okay, one, one last question. Uh, with regard to the reduced premium expectation for workers' comp and public liability, can you comment how much of that expectation is due to favorable claims experience versus a generally softer market? I mean, are we getting the benefit of favorable claims experience in our premiums?
Absolutely. 100% without question. Because the market right now is, um, although it's not really hardening, you're not getting, it's not as soft as it was. You're not getting the major decreases. And the players that I'm getting, who have looked at the city year after year, are major, major insurance companies who want to write the best of the best. And they consider the city of Newport Beach to be the best of the best for various reasons. The way you have loss control, the way you control your losses, but also as far as your claim history. So absolutely, it does have a major impact on your pricing. Not only today, but also in the future. Because even though we might hit a hard market, it doesn't mean you're going to be paying the same pricing as the city that doesn't have the same standards that the city of Newport Beach has. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public want to comment on the insurance renewals? Okay, seeing no one. Is there any public comments, anything not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll recess to close session.